I don't know if it's with the kids. I think they're ready, right?
Okay. I haven't got any.
And Greg won't be here.
Yeah, good sales go.
Everyone else here?
Okay. I haven't got the email yet.
It's supposed to.
I always want to see.
Oh, Jean. There she is. Uh, wait. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 13th of 2019 City Council meeting. And, uh, first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Do. Kylie.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen. Legaki.
Here.
Mieski.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Chumacher.
Here.
And Alders Borsma and Jensen are absent and excused.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to dedicate this meeting to Amber Levinhagen, our Courier Hub reporter that was killed on Friday. And our thoughts and prayers go out to them. I don't think anybody else has anything to say, but now would be the time. Go ahead, all the person, Hirsch.
Yes, I also would like to express my condolences to the Courier Hub staff and our community. Amber was a great journalist. She covered a lot of our sustainable Stoughton events, and she just started covering the city council. And she did it with enthusiasm. She was always bright and cheery, and she was a, it was an asset to the community. She'll be greatly missed.
Thank you. Also, I'm going to report out that Alder Person Borsma is in Dayton, Ohio, on a Red Cross mission. He's helping for the, for the families that were involved with the shootings out there. So, we wish Sid well, uh, well on his adventure there. And then, is there any other communications from the council members? Okay, seeing none. We have a presentation tonight for Stoughton Utilities on drinking water. And Utility Director Weiss is here tonight to do a presentation. Looks like we're queued up and ready to go.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give this presentation. I did also want to take the opportunity to explain the outage that happened this afternoon. About a third of the community was affected. It ultimately was an ATC outage. The storm came through, they were affected, and so we lost two of our substations. We did work to try to backfeed those, but in the process of doing that, ATC was able to fix their issue when we were able to restore all the customers. So, the outage itself was approximately about an hour in length. Thank you. So, what I want to talk about tonight is lead and copper sampling. And ultimately, in many ways, just the water quality of Stoughton Utilities in general. So, I want to start out with, uh, really, how did we get to where we're at today? So, the history of lead. Ultimately, lead has actually been used since the Roman Empire. It has a lot of uses. Basically, one of the greatest things I think about it is that it's very malleable, so it's easy to work with. Lead-based paints, leaded gasoline. So, basically, throughout time with the industrial revolution, more and more uses of lead became available. With that, though, with extended or more use, there started to be the recognition of the health impacts to that. So, actually, in 1973, there was, the lead was basically phased out of the gasoline. Seventy-eight, lead paint was banned. In 1986 is ultimately when actually the plumbing got affected. Lead services probably were pretty much stopped being installed in the early 60s. But not actually until 1986 did it become illegal to have any fixtures within your, any plumbing basically contained anything more than 8% lead. So, you may have fixtures in your home that may actually have more than 8% lead if they were pre-1986. 1995, there was actually the ban on lead solder in food products, so in food cans. So, we've had lead in our, you know, out in the environment for a long time. 2014 now is actually when we've now banned lead being in any kind of plumbing whatsoever. So, if you buy a new fixture for your home, that fixture is actually lead-free. We've actually implemented a program for our meters which may contain up to 8% lead. We're actually, are, um, working on now that we're going with a lead-free meter. So, we're going through everything we can to minimize the exposure on lead. And that graph you can see on the side there, the important piece to take away from there is that is actually the mean level of micrograms of lead in, uh, one decaliter, excuse me, of blood. So, those are from children from ages one to five. And from 1976 to 2000, or to 1976 to, let me just, 1980, that was 15 milligrams per of lead per decaliter. Actually, now, in 2011 through 2014, it's approximately one microgram of lead per decaliter of blood. So, we've made great progress in eliminating lead from our environment, and that's had great impact on our children. So, what are the health effects? We talk, and specifically to children, now, these health effects actually do affect adults as well. One of the ones that we always hit on is brain development. It can affect IQ, it can create, you know, learning disabilities. ADHD has been tied to. But there's also a variety of other impacts that it has. It can affect the heart, hormones, which are ultimately development issues later on, blood, kidneys, a number of things. And this is exactly why it's so important that we look at the lead issue. And it's exactly why the regulation has been moved forward to eliminate lead from the environment. Common sources, though, of lead are a wide variety. Dust from industrial uses, soil, dishware actually can have lead. The fishing sinkers, you know, as a kid, you know, you kind of tend to chew on them a little bit when you're out fishing or opening them up. Again, a source of lead, bullets, paint up, paints, and then basically impacts from parents that may actually, um, work in an industry that has lead. But toys, it was a big hot topic actually recently, and toys that came over from China and regulating those so that they weren't bringing in another source of lead. So, the water quality of Stoughton's water is regulated by the Department of Natural Resources. It regulates all municipal water supplies. And actually, municipal water supplies are highly, much more regulated than bottled water. And we're very fortunate in Stoughton. We have extremely high water quality. We actually do very limited treatment, and we want to continue to limit any treatment that we do of that water. So, that's basically a snapshot of what our system looks like. We pump from the aquifer. We bring that pump, we pump that water up. We may store it in a variety of different things to ultimately create pressure within the system. None of that system, though, has lead. It's not until it comes into a, basically, that customer side, well, the lead service side. So, if it has to come into contact with lead to have lead in the water. Our distribution system does not contain lead. The water supply, that raw water, does not contain lead. But it's basically, once it gets into the home and that service of whether it could contain lead if there's actually, um, lead service. So, this is kind of what that looks like. So, the water main doesn't contain lead. And this is a snapshot of that, of that water service, which I think makes this issue extra challenging potentially, is that there's a public side of a water service and there's a private side of the water service. And this graphic represents, so there's a municipal responsibility, so the water main is the municipal responsibility. The service lateral is to, basically, that curb stop, which is a valve that turns on and off the water. And then interior to the house, there's the water meter, which ultimately, also, the municipal responsibility. All the blue, so that remaining portion of the water service is the customer's side, and then the interior plumbing. So, one of the greatest sources of lead is that lead service. Because if you have a lead service, it's 100% made of lead. Whereas, you may, within your home, though, have other sources of lead. Your fixtures may have up to 8% lead. You may have galvanized piping within your home, which has a ability to kind of trap that lead for a while and then release it. So, you may have even lead trapped in your hot water heaters. There's also lead solder that was used in copper piping that can be a source of lead. But ultimately, the greatest source of lead potential is in the water service itself. So, lead and copper rule. So, with all the regulation that we talked about, this is the piece where really, they started to look at water quality. So, in 1991, they established the lead and copper rule. Really, the purpose, again, is to get the lead out of the system, to eliminate any potential health risks that there would be for lead or copper. And they established, actually, 15 parts per billion, and that's the exceedance level. The exceedance level, though, is not a violation. It just triggers additional mechanisms that a water utility needs to basically engage. That includes, basically, looking at a water service replacement system. It looks at corrosion control. It looks at public education. It looks at additional sampling. And that's actually what happened with this year's water sampling. So, sampling, how does that work? We do a variety of different sampling throughout our, the community for a variety of different things. But lead and copper sampling is unique in the sense that we are responsible for the water to the tap. And the only way to really identify what that risk is to lead and copper is to actually have the water sampled at the tap. So, we actually, there's a 30 sites that are identified, the DNR has approved, that basically, we provide bottles to customers, to homeowners. They take that sample. We give them very specific instructions. So, they take that, that bottle, set it aside, don't use the water for at least six hours, and then take that first flush of, and the bottle's about that big, and they fill that bottle with water. Set it outside, next day, we'll come by and pick it up. So, the idea is that it's contact time. So, it must have at least six hours of contact time to actually get in, you know, we want a representative sample of if that water were to stagnate within the system, that home system, and what would be those lead levels. So, basically, it's the, try to represent if you were to, say, go to bed, and then we're going to take that first flush of water right away in the morning. So, I think the one, there's probably many key takeaways. But one of them ultimately is that the threat of exposure, as long as the lead exists, the threat of exposure remains the same. The fact that we had an exceedance level, so as they look at by the regulation, it's 90th percentile. So, the bold numbers that you see there is actually what that 90th percentile is of the number of samples that were taken. You can see quite a range, but all within a relatively similar range. So, I think the least was around 10, the most being 19 in 2014 when we had an exceedance. The average level, though, you know, hovers kind of in a similar zone, a little bit over two and a little bit over five. But again, as long as there's lead in the system, regardless of the exceedance level, the threat still exists. So, where is their lead services? We've been actually inventorying for a long time on what we believe to have lead services. We do this through a couple of different things. We actually look at land records to say, okay, the houses of this age, and so we suspect that it would have a lead service. The other thing that we do is when we go and change out meters, we actually go into the home to change that meter out. We identify whether it's lead, copper, or galvanized steel. Because we want to identify those, looking forward for a variety of reasons. One, we want to engage those customers that have lead service with education to encourage them to replace their side of the service. And then we also use that information to say, okay, for capital improvements, what areas do we want to target for water work so that we can actually eliminate the lead services on our side? What we found of the 4,853 services that we have, basically, a total of 756, we believe that have lead services at some level. And we've got a kind of a breakdown because we've been able to do some of that water work that I described, where we've been able to eliminate those services on the, on the public side, but we haven't always been able to engage the customer side to have them replace those. We do have a few in the list where we show that we've got public-only lead. The only thing that we can think of in that situation was, it's based on the age of the home, the age of the water main that we think would have come through there. But we've been able to identify on the home side that they have copper. And we're going through a process right now of actually digging down at the curb stop to identify and verify those to see if we do actually have lead on the public side and not on the private side. So, basically, of the, you know, quantity of services that we have, about 15% have lead services. So, how do you identify if you have lead service? First thing is you need to gather up a flatbraid screwdriver and a magnet. And then you want to find your water meter. It's just a good indication of where you're at in your plumbing. So, you find your water meter, typically, it's going to be in the basement. And then you want to identify that pipe that goes from the water meter towards the street, how you believe you'd be receiving water. And you take that flatbraid screwdriver, and you just rub against that pipe, and you want to scratch it. And if it comes back and it's the color of a penny, you have a copper water service. If it comes, if it's gray, but it remains kind of a dull, flat gray, it's galvanized steel. But if it becomes shiny, then it's actually lead. The other way to identify that is that a magnet will stick to galvanized steel, but it won't connect to, or stick to a lead pipe. So, the solution here, ultimately, the solution is to eliminate lead from our system. And that's ultimately our goal in this, moving forward, is to, you know, go through the effort to identify all these properties to develop a plan for the ultimately removal of lead within our system. So, an immediate plan, how can you reduce exposure? A lot of it has to do with come down to contact time. If you can minimize the contact time, so when you get up, you're going to take a glass of water. It's been a little while since you used the tap. Don't put the glass underneath the faucet first. Think about flushing the water and then taking that glass. Think about the fact that you want, really, to get the water that's in the water main that hasn't actually had contact with lead. But that section of water that's basically in your water service has had contact with lead. The other thing is always use cold water. Lead is less soluble in cold water over hot water. So, even if you're going to boil some noodles, you know, boil a pot of water, make some noodles, take that as cold water and then boil that water. Taking hot water, you have a greater potential of bringing in more lead. Other thing to do is if you've got an aerator on your faucet, clean those regularly because they can be a great source of, if you've got lead coming in, they'll collect there, and then your water continues to pass over that. So, clean those out. And then the other option really is to have a water filter. But I highly recommend two things with a water filter. You want to make sure, one, that whatever filter you, you select actually is certified to remove lead. And you also want to be changing your filters often. You want to make sure that you don't, because if you leave a filter for a long time, you can have a variety of other issues, particularly bacteria and things that can be caused by having a filter that hasn't been replaced. So, me actually following the sampling results, soon as we knew, we started to engage the community. We wanted to make sure those people that had the greatest chance of, of making contact with those most vulnerable aware. So, we reached out to the clinics, the hospital, the schools, and the daycares. They didn't have lead services, but we wanted them to be in the know. So, if there was questions or, so they could help get the information out as far as what the potential concern may be. We reached out to media outlets, The Hub and other sources. We put a message on our website, and then we put a billing message on. So, the other thing that we have engaged is if you have a lead service, and we want some way to be able to verify that, and you have, you know, someone in your, in your home that would be considered to be high-risk, like an expectant mother or young children, we actually have filters available at the utility for no cost. And they're actually certified filters and remove, like, 90, they're certified to remove 99.9% of all lead. So, immediate additional actions is we started to conduct additional sampling. And that's a regulatory requirement, but we actually didn't receive our DNR letter until August 6th. And we already engaged in that sampling ahead of that as well. Continue to be proactive as looking for, and this is actually continuing ongoing prior to the exceedance. This year, as far as our capital improvement projects, we'll be replacing 75 lead services on the public side. Unfortunately, only six on the private side, but grateful for those as well. And one of the big things here is to start talking about this, to really start working on developing, what is our plan long-term to eliminate lead? How are we going to achieve that? Especially considering that we can't just do it ourselves. We need the partners of the community, of the property owners, to also take the commitment to remove lead from the system as well. So, additional actions is collaborate with the DNR, which we've actually already met with them. And then we did receive our letter from them August 6th. We actually had our mailings out to our customers ahead of that letter even being sent to us. But we knew that there was additional action that needed to happen based on the exceedance. The next steps also would be the corrosion control report. We've started to work on that. And ultimately, that's just looking at our water quality. Is there something that we can do from a water quality standpoint that could potentially minimize how soluble the lead is? Generally, our water is very hard, though. And if you have a very basic water, you don't have concerns. There's nothing additional that you can do really correctly from a pH standpoint to minimize that. There is the possibility of adding chemicals, but I would always, that's a last, that would be something we don't really want to do. There's a variety of different reasons why we would very much consider that to last option. Because it doesn't really fix the problem. It only masks it, kind of kicks that can down the road. It also comes at a cost, and water quality is very dynamic. We have fantastic water quality. And adding an additional chemical to that, you always get some results you don't anticipate. There's a cost to that, and it's a phosphor, it's a phosphate. So, ultimately, we're regulated on the wastewater side, and we would have to remove it once it got to there as well. So, additional cost to the wastewater treatment plant. Lead service replacement program. And we've been actually reviewing a variety of different plans and programs out there. In 2014, we did an awesome job of the public education, doing the sampling, doing everything that we could do moving forward. But we didn't have the opportunity then that we do now. At that point in time, there was no funding mechanism that the utility could participate in to help support that private side. And that's changing. That actually has changed last year. So, an opportunity now that we have, that we didn't have in 2014, to further work towards getting the lead out of the system. So, next steps, continuing education outreach. This is definitely probably one of the first discussions that we're going to have related to this topic. We're going to be bringing more information, looking at ordinance, looking at what other things we can do from a funding mechanism standpoint, other regulation that we may want to put in place. Complete that corrosion control report because that's particularly important. There's going to be another set of, say, responses that DNR will have coming out of that report. And so, we want to be careful to not move too quickly as far as a plan, as far as our replacement plan, until we know exactly what those DNR requirements will be as a result of that treatment report. Continuing sampling. And actually, with sampling, if we go through 60 samples next year and are able to get, say, our 90th percentile is under 15, 15 parts per billion or less, we go back into our current, our previous state, where we go back to sampling 30 sites, this additional action that we are, the triggers that we are required to do go away. We do plan to do that. That's also what we did in 14, but that won't end this conversation. We do believe very much that 2020 will probably be able to sample ourselves back into, at 15 parts per billion or less. But we want to just, we want to do that as far as just, again, assuring water quality. But we want to continue this momentum that we've created around this issue to actually put a program in place. EPA is a big player in this, particularly right now. They haven't done a lot of changes to the lead and copper rule in, like, seven or eight years. And they're actually coming out with something right now. There's a little bit of rumor that they're going to be looking at going to 10 parts per billion or seven parts per billion as being that action level. If that's the case, then we may not sample ourselves back into more of a compliant state. The other thing that they're now is going to be putting in place is they will disallow partial replacement. So, as we've done in the past, where we went around with our capital improvements program, we've replaced our side of that lead service. We've highly encouraged the private side to replace their lead service. That will be no longer possible under this rule. So, we want to be careful moving forward with our program to make sure that we mirror our regulations to what ultimately the EPA is going to have.
Jill, could you explain that? So, that means that you would be obligated to replace both our side and the private side? Or nothing at all? I mean, this is, that's confusing.
It is confusing because actually, the feedback that I've seen, depending on what side of the fence that you're on, I've seen quotes on both sides. Oh, now the utility doesn't have to replace their, you know, service because they can't engage both? Or does this is a win for everybody, and the lead's going to be taken out of the system? There's some pieces to that requirement that I think are not yet fleshed out in the code of what they're proposing and what that's going to look like. And I think we want to know that kind of moving forward. Either way, on which sides of those land, we're going to be proactive on replacing those lead services. We need to be.
So, and if you could clarify, and I think one of the illustrations showed that when the public is replaced, the service is replaced to that, I don't probably have the, the blue thing on the, you know. So, if it's on the other side of, somebody asked me if it's on the other side of the sidewalk, and it's a brand-new sidewalk, presumably, the plumber would need to work with the city and planning department, and that would be ripped up, and then, how does all that work? I know that a couple of people asked me about that, and I wasn't quite sure how that all came to be.
And all of that's true. Basically, where that curb stop is, so where that valve sits, where you can turn it on and off, is ultimately where our ownership stops. We own that. Then from there is the private sides. They would need to work with the city depending on where that lives. It varies quite a bit, actually. Some are right behind curb, so they might then go through the sidewalk. Some are on the other side of the curb. Now, when we're doing installations, we're going to the property line. We're going to that right-of-way line so that that's clear as far as where those live. But ultimately, they'll have to work with the city, get an excavation permit if they're working within the city right-of-way to do that work.
It's like, they could presumably have to take out a newish sidewalk.
Absolutely.
Sounds like, okay.
Yep. And to that end, you know, we've got 75 that we replaced this year. We've had six of them go. As we look to the future, as we look to all of the things that we have, because we have some where we've got lead on both sides. We got now some where we've got copper on the public side, but lead on the private side. They just, their streets just got torn up, and they just went through that process. But we're going to have to figure out a plan ultimately to engage all of those people to come up with a program that kind of fits all of the situations that we have. I'm going to go to the last slide.
Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, I probably could get there. I just think I have one last point that I wanted us to think about moving forward, but...
I think that was it.
Oh, yep, that was it, actually, with the plans on the uniqueness. Because actually, even like, right now, as we look at Main Street, we're not doing water work there now. But we may have to look at that in the future. So, there's a variety of different things that, unique situations that are going to present themselves that I just, this is the start of a very long discussion, that we need to look at funding. We need to look, you know, what does the EPA bring forward? What is the DNR going to require from us?
Are there any questions for Director Weiss before? I had a couple. Have you been receiving a lot of inquiries or phone calls or people coming in to get test kits?
Yep. We, we don't actually provide testing at, at Stoughton Utilities. We can provide numbers. The cost is about $20. There's State Lab of Hygiene and Northern Lakes Testing that will provide that testing. We can get them all the information they, they need. I do highly recommend, if anybody's got any questions, to give us a call. We're here to support this. We want to figure out, you know, work with every property owner to get the lead out of the system and figure out exactly where they're at. If they do have a lead service, though, to that point, and they have a medical need, we will provide a picture for them as well for filtering the water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Minutes and reports are in the packet. That brings us to public comment period. And we have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that would be Denise Duransek. And Denise is here to talk about the Downhill Revitalization Ad-Hoc Committee.
Good evening. And thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you this evening. I wanted to give you an update. I assume that most of you received the summary of the interviews and the focus group that we... I assume that most of you received the summary of the interviews and the focus group that we, that our consultant did on July 31st and August 1st, and we had wonderful turnout. There were 35 different businesses and organizations invited to the interviews and focus group, and only two of them no-showed. So I thought that was a very, very good turnout. We got very good responses. We had a nice mix of downtown businesses from retail to service to restaurants, people who owned their buildings, people who rented, landlords. We had representatives of the arts, major downtown employers, and also local officials. So we had a very broad spectrum, and I think, you know, this was just the first step in the data gathering, but I think it tells you pretty clearly that we need to have much better collaboration and communication in the downtown area. And so we will, as a subcommittee, start to take a look at that. But we also have other data that we're gathering, and I think all of you also got the link to the market survey, which is going to go through the end of September, and we need input from Stoughton residents and also out-of-town people who have used our downtown. So I'm asking everyone in this room to please take the survey, but also circulate it amongst your friends and family who have used downtown and who can then give us more feedback. As of yesterday afternoon, we already had 319 responses, and so we're off to a good start. We need about 1,100 responses. And so the survey for people at home can be found at the homepage of the city of Stoughton website or on their Facebook. And then on October 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening, we'll have our first public meeting at La Juret. And again, getting feedback on the look of downtown and their needs.
What's that again?
So, October 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00, and that will be at La Juret. So, that will then be pretty much the data gathering, and then the consultants will be getting to work on reports and also physical planning of downtown, too. So, there you have it. We are moving along, and again, I want to thank you for having the foresight to fund this work. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the council minutes and then a resolution to issue an operator's license. I'm looking to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Harley and a second by Alderperson Reeves. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Not removed, but the council minutes, the name of the Bergans is not represented, spelled correctly. Bergen, B-E-R-R-I-G-A-N. I think it's Burgean in your notes.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, we have a motion and a second to approve as corrected. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Takes us to old business. Ordinance 22 of 2019 is the second reading, coming from Public Works, Alderperson Bartlett.
Ordinance 22 of 2019, amending section 10-35 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, electrical permits, and Public Works approved for it as zero on July 18th, and I move to approve.
Second.
Second by Alderperson Reeves. Any discussion? Alderperson Bartlett?
It's an update, the state statutes change, so this is an update that exempts manufacturing and industrial facilities from electrical licensing permit, so we'll just bring in our zoning code in line with state statutes.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. New business, we have a public hearing for a proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Anything we'd like to cover before we go into the public hearing? Or should we go right into it? All right, we're going to go right into it, so we'll close the regular meeting, and then we'll reopen for the public hearing. Is there anybody here that would wish to speak on, a public hearing on the topic of the comprehensive plan amendment? Once, twice, three times? Okay. Nobody's here to speak, so we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll reopen for our regular business for the city council. And we have ordinance 23 of 2019, and that's on as a first reading, and that's coming from, I guess it would come from planning, so I would look to Alderperson Caravelo.
This is ordinance 23 of 2019, first reading, which is an ordinance to adopt the amended comprehensive plan of the city of Stoughton, and Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay. Are there any questions or anything that we want to go through? Does everybody understand what the changes were in the plan? Okay, if anything comes up, oh, Alderperson Hirsch, go ahead.
Maybe, I don't know who could answer this, but on this first picture, Rodney, this one?
I'm trying to get it on the screen.
I know, I know.
Sure, it worked for the PowerPoint, but now I lost it.
Of course. I can't see which map it is. I think it's the first one, maps, 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D. Oak opening doesn't seem to be extended all the way to 138. It seems to still have that roundabout, you know, is this, the other maps show that it's a proposed collector's street, but on that big map, it's...
It still shows a right-of-way connection to 138.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, that that's still part of our plan, is to have it all the way connected to 138.
The plan shows a right-of-way connection to 138.
Yeah, it just doesn't have that little dash line all the way there.
I apologize here. Technology's awesome.
All right. Are there any other questions? Basically, it's for Phase 2 of Kettle Park West with the new configuration on the maps, which has created more single-family homes, removing the multi-unit and moving the park area, and that's basically the summary of it for people watching at home that thought they could see it on the screen. Doesn't appear to be happening. That'll come back in two weeks at the next meeting. If you have any questions or concerns before the next meeting, feel free to reach out to myself or Planning Director Schill, and we'll try to get you answers. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, and that would be R 123 of 2019, and that's coming from Public Safety, and since Greg's not here tonight, I'm looking for Alderperson Riley as the vice chair of Public Safety. Are you prepared?
I am, however, I think actually Jean is the vice chair, because I avoided that responsibility, but I'll be happy to do that this evening. I think you are.
I can read. All good.
I'll read, and we'll figure it out before the next meeting.
We need to figure out who's the vice chair.
We do. I'm quite sure I'm right, but, sure, thank you. This is R 123.
We can let each do one. How's that sound?
Okay, that's, I'll take the first when you take the second.
All right.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is R 123, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a reserved Class B intoxicating liquor license to La Cantina LLC, Lord Zoranda Agent, DBA La Cantina located at 620 Nygard Street, approved by the committee or recommended by the committee for approval, five to nothing, and I so move.
Second.
Nicely done.
I know, you're so lovely, Fred.
Thank you.
Any thing you'd like to add to that, or?
Just, just quickly, this is an application for the currently vacant, although I know that they're in the process of working on to get it open, new restaurant that will be located where the Marsalas, the new Marsalas that became the second new Marsalas that now is completely gone, out, out near that BBG place or whatever in the hotel. So this is their application for that new restaurant. It's going to be a Mexican restaurant, obviously, and it looks like it's going to be lovely. And so there were no issues found by the chief when, for his investigation of license, so we think it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or anything you want to add, Chief?
Nope, everything was in order.
All right, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Item number nine, Resolution 124, 2019, and Alderperson Legaki, you get this one.
This is for the Wine Walk, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B wine retailer's license and special event license to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for the Stoughton Wine Walk. Public safety, public safety recommended at five to zero. I do see some folks present that if there were to be questions, but we really didn't have too many questions. Things were really well lined up and presented to us. We're looking forward to this event.
Okay. So is that, is there a motion in there somewhere?
I so moved.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right. Any questions or comments to add to what Jean already covered? Chief, you're good with it? First year?
Yeah, this is our first Wine Walk, and everything was in order, and I always have to compliment the Chamber on how organized their applications are, so I'll do that publicly, but everything was in order, and Holly and I reviewed it and went through the new regulations regarding Wine Walks, and so we'd recommend approval.
All right. Kelly, are you here to observe or to advertise your event? Come on up.
I can talk quick.
I knew you couldn't resist.
Well, thank you very much, and on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm presenting their request for the inaugural Wine Walk event. This would be a downtown shopping event. We're encouraging our participating businesses to offer special deals to all the ticketed participants, that, and applicable that evening only. The event is limited to 300 patrons with 18 stops, and we're going to offer partner restaurants downtown to offer late-night specials, more so an after-opera house rush, so that they can get some food after the Wine Walk. Unlike any other downtown shopping events that we currently have, there's not a central location. What we're doing is urging participants to stay in each business and shop. Of course, we'll have licensed bartenders on staff, and each stop will have dump buckets before they leave. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know it's a lot of work to put it together. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That carries. The next three are coming from Finance, R 125 of 2019, Alderperson Schumacher.
All right. R 125, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Great Lakes Realty Advisory Group Incorporated for real estate appraisal services for the riverfront development properties. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second by Alderperson Riley, Alderperson Schumacher.
So this is to reevaluate or do an appraisal of the properties within the TID 8 boundary. The 5,800 will come out of the TID 8 fund. So this is, I don't know, to get it prepared for valuation.
And just to add, this also went through the RDA last week, and I think Attorney Dragney was pretty instrumental in putting this together. Do you have anything to add?
I would just add that the appraisal that we're trying to have done here, I think, is going to be important for the RDA and the city to have as we move forward with negotiating with potential buyers of land in that area.
Any questions or comments from anyone else? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. R 126 of 2019, Alderperson Schumacher.
All right. R 126, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with RG Houston Company Incorporated for the 2019 Business Park Expansion Contract Number 3-2009, Glacier Marine Drive. We approved this earlier today unanimously in Finance Committee. The bid is in at, just short of $2.1 million, with the budget of it at $2.6 million, but there are some engineering costs and that that need to be calculated into that, so it'll get closer up to the projected budget, but isn't expected to exceed that. Oh, this completes the, the street between Progress Lane and Williams Drive on the north end of the North Business Park.
And did you make the motion? I didn't hear.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Okay, was there a second?
No.
Alderperson Riley seconded, thank you. Any questions or comments? Anything you want to add, Director Schill?
A great summary. This project will begin in 2019 and be completed in 2020. There's a, there's a great deal of earthwork that has to be done as part of this. It'll create some sites that'll be for, for market. You'll recall, part of these properties are owned by the city under the TIF, TIF 3, 6, and so we'll be marketing some of that land, this will open up that land to be marketed.
And I think this is also a requirement in our agreement with, with North American Fur when they put in their building, right?
We have a contractual obligation to complete this road by the end of 2020, at least fronting the NAFA property.
Okay. Don't see any hands up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. R 127 of 2019 is coming from Landmarks, Alderperson Legaki.
This has been a rigorous attempt to officially designate the property boundary of the local landmark known as the power plant at 601 South Fourth Street, also known as 515 South Fourth Street, in the city of Stoughton. We recommended approval at six to zero at our last meeting, where Attorney Dragney attended as well. I so move this resolution.
Second.
A second by Alderperson Reeves. Anything else you'd like to cover? I think that was a good summary, and we have Attorney Dragney was there, Peggy Bergan is here. If you'd like to ask Peggy any questions. Alderperson Hirsch.
Yeah, unless I missed it, one of the things when Peggy came to the RDA to talk about this, the legal description and boundary was to designate, you know, what the southern boundary is, and right now, all it says in here is to the property line, but nowhere on the map tells us where the property line is and what that is. And so I think that was the biggest question that we needed, you know, going forward with the whole RDA, was what is that southern boundary, and that's what we've been waiting for, to move this along, you know, our part. We don't know if, I mean, there's no place on this map that indicates what the southern boundary is. Is it to the river? Is it to the edge of the building? It gives us nothing. I mean, it's, it's, I guess I'm kind of a little disappointed, because that's something that we've been asking for and what we needed from the RDA is, what is that? We, RDA really wants to make sure that we protect this building and that there, nothing in the future ever gets built up alongside of it, and I just don't know what to say.
I, I'd like to speak to that and would encourage Peggy to come speak, but I think Attorney Dragney will finish with the good education and comments. We so discussed how to depict the southern line and get a very clear, because of the way that the shore slopes and moves, and what exactly, and where is the property, property line can be a very, very interesting defining point that I do want Attorney Dragney to speak to. It was the intention of the Landmarks Commission to not try to have the property extend into the water and the river, and so it was advised that we go with this definition of property line for what he's about to share.
Well, I don't think I advised that, that this should be the, the recommendation, and I'm going to stay neutral on that.
And, and I apologize. He did not make a recommendation. After we came to a wonderful education process by which we were truly struggling with how we choose this, we appreciated, we appreciated the information he shared with us.
So, here's... So here's the, here's kind of the property line issue in a nutshell. So we don't know for certain what the property line is. What I mean by property line is, the city owns the powerhouse property. If that property is adjacent to a river or stream, and it looks like it is, then there's a good chance that the city is a riparian owner. And that means, if that, if that parcel is indeed a riparian to the stream, that means that unless there's something in the real estate record that we would just find if we did comprehensive research on the title history here, unless there's something to the contrary, the city's title extends to the center of that stream. But things get a little more complicated because I would say it extends to the center of that stream as that extreme existed at some point in the past. And of course, there have been artificial alterations made to that river over time. And so we don't know, and so there are some things, and I think that the HPC recognized that, well, we can't say for certain today where that line is. And they understood, I think, because I think they said, they understood that there would need to be probably additional work done to really know exactly where that line is. And they anticipate that there, that work will likely be done at some point in time. So that's point one. We also talked a little bit about what is likely to happen with respect to the, the kind of research that will probably need to be done on this parcel before any, any property interest is conveyed. As we talked about the idea that it's going to be important for the city to make sure that it does retain control over property south of that building. We're not exactly sure where that line would be drawn from a property line description, but we're going to be working with a surveyor at some point to prepare either a certified survey map or a plat that would describe the boundaries of lots or property that would be conveyed to a developer, for example. And in that process, I think we'll all recognize the need to create a parcel boundary at that time that allows the city to retain control over, you know, the land area, some amount of land area between the building and the river, and the river, because of all of the work the city plans to do in that area. Trail improvements, the whitewater park, and so on. And so we will be doing, I expect there will be title work done as part of that process, trying to determine what the state of the record title is. And that line is going to be drawn. Whether we're going to, so what we'll, what we'll end up with, I think as a result of that process is, we'll have a couple of different boundaries that we'll be talking about. One will be, what's the property line of the powerhouse property, which I think we're going to delineate on that certified survey map. So we know what that is and we can control what that is. And that'll be done before we sell property to anyone. And that'll be one line. There will be another line, which will be, what is this southerly property line described in this Landmarks Commission designation? Because that's the line that's going to define the Landmarks Commission authority to review proposed alterations. And that line is, as, you know, today, a little bit unclear where it is. And we won't know for certain how to draw that line, again, until we do both title work, research, and perhaps we have to look at some old maps to see what did that river, what was the center line of that river at some point in history? So that, that's another line that's out there. That's the line that's before you tonight, is that, is, should this nomination be approved when it's defining the southern boundary of the landmark as the property line? And the Landmarks Commission's conclusion was, well, we might not be able to draw it today because we're not, we haven't done enough research to know exactly where it is. But they said it can be determined. In their mind, they felt that with sufficient additional kind of review of the matter, it would be possible to determine where that line is. So I don't know, that's my, that's the best I can do on that one.
If I can piggyback on that and ask Peggy to speak, if I am not correctly representing that, we felt that that information would be clear when survey happened. At this point, with all of the records, they've rigorously looked at all the maps and the overlays. And we believe that that area, that land surrounding directly south to where the water goes is what we intend to be able to speak to. Only because of these definitions and property lines and the prior plat and it being the larger parcel, it is, we're not able to offer this very succinct number like we can 30 feet and 50 feet. And so we're waiting to look at what survey will be. And we believe that property line is the best description we can do to help keep this landmark designation going.
Yes, I think that at this point, using the south property line is the only terminology we have available to us because we don't have a number. Where that number comes from is a survey. You want a number, that has to be done through a certified survey, a land survey. That's not something that the Landmarks Commission can do. So using a property line is sort of accepted best practices for identifying the edge of a property, the property line. And so without any further details about dimensions, we've gone with what's considered professional best practices to use the property line. Again, if you want a specific dimension, that will have to come with a, with a survey.
And just to add to that, I think part of the discussion was, and then I think Aldo President Mayeski will be next, but just to finish up, I think it was, part of the conversation was, is, well, if we do a survey now, is that really good use of money because we're going to have to turn around and do another survey again when we parcel up the properties? So is it really, I mean, do we really need to know that now or not? And I guess that's kind of the question here. And I think that the Landmarks felt that really wasn't necessary because it really wasn't going to change what they're trying to do. And their charge is really to, to protect the interests of the building and the setting around the building. President Mayeski, did you have, by the same?
I did. First of all, remember, you can just throw any idea of a property line right now. Don't even think about that. What you need to think about is, we're designating the line of protection for this certain facility. And what does that mean? It doesn't mean that by extending that line to the riparian edge, that it changes anything. All it, all it means is that the Landmarks Commission will have an opportunity to look at anything that is proposed and to find, one way or another, if it is either detrimental, benign, or a benefit to that property. And will make recommendations that will put any, any future development in, on the right course. So, you know, historically, you know, Attorney Dragney is correct, yeah, riparian rights, property lines change. They change all the time because a river is a dynamic thing. All you have to do is look at the Rio Grande River in the United States and Mexico. It changes within, I think it moves at least 20 mi, has moved 20 miles since it was originally designated. But that doesn't change, that doesn't mean that the property line, the line, the boundary line for the United States and Mexico is, has stayed static. It has moved with the river. And therefore, logic dictates that, if I remember correctly, that riparian boundaries move with, with the natural body. They change with it. Does it matter? Not really. If that, if that land within that riparian area is going to be developed or if it's not going to be developed, or any proposed changes to it. All it means is that we're going to allow the Landmarks Commission opportunity to evaluate, to see if that has any detriment to the, to the landmark that's designated. So I, my motion is to, I would make an amendment to...
There's going to be a point of order there. I don't know if we can make an amendment to the Landmarks' recommendation on this. My, that's my understanding.
If that's, if that's the case, then I would, I would strongly suggest that we deny this boundary until it is changed so that it shows that the riparian edge is the southern boundary.
Well, so, yeah, I don't...
Is that correct?
I, I think you're correct that the council is limited to either approving or not approving what Landmarks Commission has recommended. The council can't make changes to that and then approve something different from what the Landmarks Commission has recommended.
Because they're their own authority.
Well, but that's the way the ordinance is drafted. Just similar, it's kind of the same thing I said about the comprehensive plan. You can only approve what the plan commission has recommended. You can't say, well, thank you for your recommendation, but now we're going to approve something different. So the, the choice for the council is to either approve it or not approve it.
So therefore, I do strongly recommend that if we do not go to the riparian edge, that we, that we decline and bring it back at the next session with it, with, with the modification, that go to the riparian edge.
Could I just ask it for clarification? So, do you mean the ordinary high watermark? Or, I'm not sure what riparian edge means, so...
Well, it would be, is what is normally given in a, a survey that is along a water body of a linear fashion.
Well, there's the, sometimes a survey will show the meander line.
It would go to the Thalwig of the river.
Hmm, that's... The what? The Thalwig? That one I don't know.
The Thalwig of the river is the natural body, is the, is the deepest part of the channel of the natural river.
That, oh, that's just not a term I'm familiar with, so...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
So I, I think, unless you want to respond to that, I think the choice is, is to whether to approve it. I mean, we could postpone it instead of denying it, right?
Could either, you could table it. You could deny it or approve it, or...
Did you want to comment? And I know Aldo Person Legaki has her hand up as well.
Sure. One thing to keep in mind is that if we're using the, the south property line, it's the south property, property line regardless of where it is. And so that would be, again, be determined, be determined by survey. And if the survey does all that work, you know, they research the historic maps, they research the original deeds and plats, and they research the original intent of forming that property, and they look at all these things. And if they determine that the, the property extends into the river, that's the south boundary. If they determine that the south boundary ends somewhere else, that's the south boundary. I mean, I don't think that we want, that we want to have a boundary that extends further than whatever a surveyor would determine is the south boundary. So for example, if a surveyor comes out and says, okay, the south boundary is, you know, at these dimensions, and it doesn't go into the river, I don't think that we want to say, no, no, we really want to have property that goes into the river. We just want to use the property line. And so...
I want to ask a question first before...
Okay. So you want clarification?
I want to ask a question.
Okay.
A question for clarification. So, okay, the city owns this piece of property right now. And the city can determine what part, how this, how this property will be no matter what. They could say, the edge of this property is three inches from the building edge. And because they want to keep the riparian right to do whatever they want to on the, along the river edge. Is that, is that what I'm understanding you saying, that you're, you're fine with that?
No, I don't think that, I don't think that there, a survey would show that the south boundary of the property line is three inches away from the building.
Could, could I speak to that as well?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that it's, that it's there now, but they could in the future, when they sell that piece of property, say, you know, we want to be able to control along the river. So we're going to make the boundary of this parcel to be three inches from the building.
Well, we would be landmarking the, the boundary as it exists today.
Which was today?
I'm sorry. The, the property line as it exists today.
At the time of survey.
Yeah. I believe that's the intent behind the nomination, is to say that the southern boundary of the landmark is the property line that exists as of the date the designation is approved. And so if the city modifies the property line for purposes of conveying an interest in that property, that wouldn't change the description of the landmark site that's subject to Landmark Commission review.
So the boundary could be different than the parcel?
That's, yeah. So these are, the, they're, the property line for purposes of conveyancing is something that could change as a result of a new survey that's done. The property line for purposes of defining the landmark site, I believe the intent is, it's the property line as it existed on the date the nomination is approved. I think that's the intent. If I could say one more thing?
Then how...
Sorry.
I totally understand what you're saying, but if we don't know what the, so you're asking us to vote on something that we don't know about yet?
Well, I'm not asking you to approve it, or, or do...
But that's, that's basically what you're saying.
That's the recommendation.
That's just, that's what the recommendation is. It, and I'm not, again, I'm going to stay neutral on, on that, whether that, on what to do.
Aldo Person Hirsch? And then Riley.
I guess I need a clarification of what Aldo Mayeski is talking about when he talks about to the river's edge, because part of the south building is at the river's edge already, and some of it is like 30, 40 feet from the river's edge. So when you make it as the river's edge, which are you referring to?
I would say the natural river and not the, not the, the artificial causeway.
So not the tail race that's cutting into the, the building?
I would, I would bet you dollars on, for donuts, that the original survey would go to the original, to the, to the natural edge of the river.
But not if it's a pump house?
Or natural center of the river.
But it's a pump house, which uses that tail race to actually pump, so...
I'm not, I'm not saying that, that's right or wrong, but...
So you was, you would say about 30 feet from the southern edge, which is probably about what it is to the riverbank?
Right. Because otherwise, they would not have had the right to put that race in there.
Aldo Person Riley had his hand up, and then we'll come back to Attorney Dragney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, and I think Councilperson Hirsch already clarified this, but I'm going to ask anyway. As we develop this entire area, the lakefront area, would any of that development with respect to the level of walkways and other things that we're talking about and contemplating, would that be affected at all by this designation and where we define that property line?
It would, it would be effective as far, as far as what, if I, if I understand this correctly, that the Landmarks Commission would have a chance to review for any detrimental impacts to that building.
Could I follow?
Sure. And I know Attorney Dragney had his hand up as well.
So if the developer comes in, and, and I know, I was looking at some beautiful plans at the RDA meeting last week, I believe it was, comes in and says, we're going to build up this, you know, the riverfront, we're going to put this groovy walkway along the riverfront, is there some possibility that the Landmarks Commission could come in and veto that and say, no, we don't like that because the property line is X and not Y? I'm just curious.
All they're, all they're looking at is impact on the, on the facility. They're not looking at where it is on the property. There's all, you're, you're confusing the property line with a land, with a boundary for the landmark designation.
And I, I think there's something in the ordinance that Matt wants to speak to.
Well, yes, so, so, I mean, fun... Well, yes, so, so, I mean, fundamentally, what this discussion is about is where the, where the Landmarks Commission will have review authority over proposed alterations. And there are some standards in the ordinance that the Landmarks Commission is required to consider when deciding whether to approve alterations. We did have some discussion at the meeting last week about some language in the ordinance that I think will probably be coming back to you for some further clarification, because right now, the ordinance defines landmark as an improvement. And the language in the ordinance that talks about when the Landmark Commission's review authority is triggered with respect to a landmark is when there are proposed alterations to the exterior of the landmark. And so the discussion was, geez, it really sounds like the ordinance is thinking about a landmark as an improvement, and the kind of things that would have to be reviewed would be changes to that improvement, which raises questions about, so if we have land area that's not an improvement per se, and someone wants to do something on that land, even if it's within the boundary, does that trigger review or not? And, and so, I think there was a recognition at the meeting last week that that's probably something that should be clarified in the ordinance. But what the intent is, what the Landmarks Commission is trying to accomplish, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm saying this incorrectly, is they're trying to identify the area that would be subject to their review authority if there are proposed alterations, number one. And number two, they're struggling with how to deal with that southern boundary. They were looking to guidance from, for example, I think, the Department of the Interior, I think, which is an agency that provides best practices for this kind of process, and they were looking to that. I, I think there, in some ways, I'm, I'm really been kind of back and forth in my own mind over whether we're overthinking this or not. You know, how much it matters, I don't know.
It's, it's difficult for Matt, because, you know, is it illegal, or is it a personal, I mean-
Policy, you know, I don't, I don't want to intrude on the policy arena.
Right.
So I think that's the difficulty we're having, and it's a combination of things.
Well, y'all should-
Alder Person Legaki.
And I defer to Peggy for, right now.
Y'all should know that every time we list a landmark, the boundary of the landmark is the parcel. It's standard practice. And so any construction that happens within that boundary, we review. And we've been doing that. So, for example, I think it's the south school apartments. They were proposing to build a shed in their, basically their backyard, so this is construction on this, on the, on the property. And so we reviewed that project. I'm not sure why this is becoming such a problem. I mean, if anything, if you look at the parcel map and you see how gigantic that parcel is, I mean, the point was, that's a really big parcel, and we don't want to landmark all that parcel. We don't want to review all of that work. We want to have enough of the historic setting so that you can understand the history of that power plant building on the river and what its setting was. I mean, this was an industrial setting. There was a railroad line that went across the north side. It was, in this immediate vicinity, it was relatively open. It was, you know, there was a lot of traffic coming through. There was a lot of shipping coming through on, you know, with vehicles and trains. So it was, it was open, and you get that view from the power plant to the river, that relationship of the power plant to the river. So that's the setting. And part of landmarking a building is that the boundary is the parcel, because that helps to protect the entire building. But in this case, like I said, we don't want the parcel. We want something tighter. You know, really just, what's the immediate environment of this power plant? And that, so we used those historic sandborne maps. We used historic photographs. We used historic aerial photographs. We used other plat maps. We used historic, well, and we looked at all this historic information to understand what this area looked like historically. And we created these lines, you know, the thirty feet to the north, the fifty feet to the west, to incorporate the historic features of this property. We used the, the property line to the west because it's so close to the sidewalk, you know? And the property line to the south, because there's nothing else there except the river. And so, it's not something, again, that we can measure, because we're not surveyors, and so we're not going to attach a measurement to that. And so we just used the, the property line.
Okay. So Attorney Dregony has a comment, and I know Alder Person Riley and Hersch would be next.
I just want to make one point about whether a survey is going to answer all questions. So, my understanding is that with, you know, riparian property, surveyors typically, they draw the lines out to the water's edge. They show a meander line, or they show an ordinary high watermark. They don't, as I understand it, tend to draw the lines out to the center of the river. They don't show that. The, the, the question of tidal extending out to the center of the river, that's based on a legal doctrine that applies to riparian property. So a surveyor will say, "Well, I'm drawing the line to the water's edge as it exists today, and that's a riparian parcel. But if we're trying to figure out where that tidal extends to out in that body of water, then there may be some additional work that would have to be done there." Now, the truth is, in my mind, are we ever really going to need to know exactly where to draw that line? Probably not, because the question is going to be, you know, somebody's doing something, could be the Whitewater Park, removal of the dam, putting a platform. And the question that's going to have to be answered is, is that activity, do we think that's triggering? Do we think that's affecting the landmark site that's been designated? My guess is that in most cases, the answer to that's going to be fairly obvious. You know, it would have to be pretty far out into the water and beyond what we think the center line of the river was, before we'd be starting to really wonder, what side of the line are we on? So if someone's putting a deck on the side of the building, I think everyone's going to be able to say, "Yeah, that looks like that's on the site." I, I think the dam, the dam removal and changes, and, and the Whitewater Park, that could get interesting in terms of specific design issues happening with the Whitewater Park. Could raise some interesting questions about, gee, is that a particular formation of boulders in the river intended to create a play spot for kayaks? Is that in the, on the landmark site or not, and is it subject to review or not? We might have some interesting discussions about that. But otherwise, I don't see that we're likely to have too many discussions about whether the, the review authority is triggered or not.
Well, and whether those, those features in the river are part of the landmark site, the question is, do they alter the setting? You know, do they alter our understanding of looking at this building and being able to look out over the river? You know, the only thing that's really going to interrupt that historic setting and that view from the building that's the river is construction that comes up off the ground. You know, a path, a walking path, a hiking path, you know, those aren't things that are going to disrupt the setting-
Can I ask you clarification, though? Because I think there are two issues. Would the path nonetheless be subject to Landmarks Commission review? You're telling us, "Well, we would have jurisdiction, but I can tell you today that it's not going to have the kind of impact that would cause us to say disapprove it," for example. You see the distinction I'm making? Is it subject to, do you believe that the path would be subject to Landmarks Commission review, even if it doesn't alter the appearance in your mind?
I think it depends on the level of construction that would be involved. I know that's maybe, it's not maybe the direct answer that you're looking for, but I think that if there was enough construction there, we'd want to look at it. And, you know, there certainly isn't any harm in, you know, having the commission look at it and say, "Yes, we could, we've looked at this construction, and sure enough, it's going to be at grade, and so it's not going to, it's not going to affect the, the historic setting and that view."
And, and the purpose of this exercise, as I understand it, is to really draw, help us all understand what is the area where you would have the authority to, to take a look, as we say.
Alder Person Riley.
Thank you. I mean, that's, you've articulated, again, my concern that I thought I articulated rather directly some time ago, which is, it appears we might be creating some conflict between the Landmarks Commission authority and what we are planning to do or hoping to do with all the redevelopment of that riverfront. I don't know that that conflict will ever be a problem, but it certainly appears to me, without this definition, we are creating that potential, that we have whoever the hell brink, or whomever is doing that part of our development, or the Whitewater Park development, we have them looking at one thing and a plan, and that may run in conflict with the Landmarks Commission's authority and input with regard to this property. So, that's, I just think that that's something we should be aware of. I think that is the case, from the way this is worded, and from what Counselor said, and I think honestly what Peggy has said. I don't know that it's a real problem, but I think it's there, and I think it's something that we should be keeping in mind. Also, lastly, I love the term "flawn," so if there's any way to put that in anywhere here, we should do that.
Alder Person Hersch.
See if that works. I'll follow that. I just wanted to make clear that I was not trying to, like, criticize the landmarks or saying that we, you know, you're not doing your job, you're doing a fantastic job. It's just, it's frustrating, because it'd be nice to have, like, I know, the southern border, because personally, I don't want anything to harm that building, and so to have that distance or whatever, it gives me a comfort zone that there's nothing that we're going to propose that's going to affect that, or that, you know, you have jurisdiction. That's where it's coming from. And because it's so fuzzy with part of the building basically in the river, or over the river, it's, it's hard, even though with the Whitewater proposal, a lot of that, you know, might be filled in. And so, if, you know, and I think we discussed that that's not going to be a problem, because it actually shores up and possibly stabilizes the building better. So I was just frustrated, because I want to make sure that we protect this building the best as possible. It's always been a favorite building of mine in the, the city, you know, and it just-
Well, you know, it's sort of strange, though, all this debate, because that's the job of the Landmarks Commission, is to protect these historic buildings. And the buildings don't get a voice, so the Landmarks Commission's job is to be the voice for these buildings. And, you know, the tools that we have available to us is to have a landmark and to have that boundary, and we can review what's in that boundary. We can't, we have to follow best practices for how we make those decisions. We can't make the decision based on the development that may happen, or someone's personal preference, or, you know, a project that's, you know, we can't be arbitrary and say, "Well, there's a development here, so we're really not going to use these standards. We're going to choose, you know, this, this line." So if the goal of the city is to protect this building, and as well as all that land south of the building to the river, it's interesting, because I don't think that there's any conflict here. I think that we have the exact same goal. And using the south property line as a boundary strengthens that ability of the city to say, "Yes, we're committed to protecting this building, and this is, you know, the boundary of this landmark, and everything in that boundary, you know, we're going to have the Landmarks Commission take a look at it if there's construction proposed in that boundary to, to help protect this building." I, I really don't understand why there's any conflict at all about using the south property line, especially when everything I hear, everyone seems to have the, the same You know, I understand your frustration about wanting a number, but, you know, we can only do that with a survey. And, you know, so the best that we can do is say, the south property line, whatever that is, you know, today. And then that information will be borne out when a survey is, is completed for this larger development, you know, surveys are going to have to be done. And so those measurements will be borne out, and there we go. We have our measurements.
Okay. Alder Person Legaki.
A while ago, I just wanted to ask Alder Mieske, or President Mieske, when you had suggested possibly not passing this because of the riparian edge, given this discussion, do you believe that the work that the committee has done has been extremely rigorous? We tried to decide if we could come up with a number, but we knew the timing of this. We felt that by being true to this, we're going to finally give this its definition. Do you believe that this southern property line, knowing that that will be pending the survey, do you believe that that will accomplish the goal?
I don't know. Where's the property line? Do you know where it's at?
I know common sense tells me what, what land-
Let me ask about common sense, we're talking legality here.
I know what common-
Do you know where it's at?
I know what common-
Do you know where it's at?
No one in this room knows where the property line is.
There you go. And so you're voting on something you don't know.
So what I'm suggesting is this, is that if we, finally, this has been declared a landmark, I believe it was 1990. It's our goal, or '91, whichever year it was. And due to very interesting circumstances, and plats, and measurements, we're just not clear on what is this landmark and its setting. If we want to wait for a survey, I don't know how that will impact our potential projects, but this Landmark Commission was willing to say, "We're comfortable with the property line. We believe it represents the mission. We don't believe that we can control all of that except to review and be true." So if this body wants this table, then are we going to wait until there's a survey? And what does that mean for our timing?
And I would mention that, you know, we use property line all the time for all kinds of decisions, and nobody's running out to do a survey every time something happens with properties all across the city to determine where that line is. You know, that line's not defined. We don't have the number. How are we going to make a decision if we don't know that number? You know, that doesn't happen. Decisions are made every day, all the time, using terminology of the property, the property line. And there, that's never been a standard that's been necessary.
All right, Alder Person Riley, and hopefully we can wrap this up.
Okay, thanks. I'll do this fast. Just to be clear, one, I'm all in favor of preserving this beautiful building. This is not about, "Hey, I want to make sure we have playgrounds or something along the lakefront and to hell with whatever happens to the building." So, just to be clear, I'm just pointing out what I think is a fact, that there is some potential conflict. Maybe it never arises. Maybe in the considerations with respect to what the Landmarks Commission wants to preserve this building, and what might be done with the Riverwalk, are never going to really meet a conflict, at least in application. So, my point was simply that I think there's perhaps conflicting jurisdictions, maybe that's not the proper term, for that. So, that's all I'm thinking of. The other thing might be, and I don't know what Counsel thinks of this, it would seem it would, I would think it would adequately protect, if there was some consideration to try to define property line as the traditional high watermark of the river. I don't know if that gives everybody enough room that-
But what do you do with this?
I know, well-
You got this corner.
Right.
You got the corner that treads down into the river.
But would that- But would that line, could that line not extend even though, because you're talking about traditional high watermark of the river, would that not apply all along that, that area?
Well, the, the, the phrase "traditional ordinary high watermark," I, I don't know what that means. Ordinary high watermark is a legal term.
Right.
And, but it's also a somewhat imprecise term. It has to be determined by someone qualified to go out and visually make a determination as to what is the ordinary high watermark. And, and that's something that can change over time as well. This is a highly unique parcel and the water, the picture we're looking at, I mean, that's, this is why this is so hard, okay? This is a very unique situation. It's not like any other parcel probably in the city of Stone when it comes to trying to figure out how to do this.
How lucky for us.
Indeed.
So just again, the committee has diligently looked at this. I am wondering what the council is thinking, so I'm asking the council that we're hoping to get designation of the boundaries. At this point, we are comfortable with the South Property Line, knowing that will be defined at a future time, but we believe it invokes the spirit of what the landmark is about. Or does this body recommend that perhaps we actually get those actuarial numbers and that is when we go forward? And that's kind of what I think this is coming down to, and I'm wondering if Counsel believes that's the case as well.
Alda Person Reeves.
Well, I, I, I guess I would ask those of you who've been involved in the RDA, you know, from the beginning, is this, is there any benefit or detriment to postponing? I mean, I don't want to put up a barrier to, you know, what I think has been positive movement on the downtown redevelopment. I think, I mean, I, based on what I'm hearing, I agree that I don't think that the Landmarks Commission can be charged with where that property line is. And I think that, you know, that, that is for a survey. That's my opinion. So I don't know what benefit there would be in postponing other than to send a message that we're not committed to getting this property moved and, you know, into the redevelopment. So I'd, I'd be interested in those of you that have been involved from the beginning recently.
President Mieske wanted to respond.
Have been involved from the very beginning with this. And, but if the Landmarks Commission would like to roll the dice and call the Southern Boundary the Southern Boundary, whatever that may be, so be it. With that, I call question.
Okay. So there's a motion to call the question. I don't remember if it needs a second. I know it is not debatable and takes two-thirds vote, that much I remember. Does anybody want a second?
Additional second.
Huh?
Additional second.
Okay. All right. So there is a, a second?
Second is required.
Okay. So it's not debatable? So...
Two-thirds vote.
Yep. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no? Okay. So that gets a two-thirds vote. So we're on to the question. And the question is the resolution that we've been discussing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you very much for all the time and effort you put into this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 13 is discuss, discussion and possible action regarding entering into an agreement with Slipstream for the OEI Municipal Energy Planning Project. And this is something that's been here in the past. And we have an updated version that Attorney Dragony was able to complete today. We've been waiting for some response from the attorneys for Slipstream. And this is a grant that we applied for a while back in partnership with other municipalities. I believe there were six of them. And we're just trying to get down to the nitty gritty here so we can actually accept the contract and move forward on this. Anything you want to add?
I would just say that I handed out a sheet of paper that shows some changes that were made to the document that was in your packet that were not made until today, based on some feedback I received from Slipstream's legal counsel. The changes, I think, are beneficial to the city. They do two things. One, they make a, there's an intellectual property provision they had in here indicating that they would own the work product that we're going to develop and, under this, and send to them. And they, and that they would have copyright protections associated with that. And so they agreed to the language I've included here, which gives the city the right, notwithstanding that copyright protection, it gives the city the right to use, to use that material going forward.
And basically what the material is, is they're doing audits and gathering data from all of our buildings and all the other buildings to the participants into the grant. And we wanted at least be able to use that information for ourselves or at least have the option to do that. And the boilerplate language they had in there wasn't going to allow that. Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
And then the other change was, they agreed to delete most of the indemnification paragraph that you can see stricken here, which the, the part that's deleted basically imposed indemnification obligations on the city and...
Maybe you can explain what that means in layman's terms.
Yes. So if you agree to indemnify someone, you're agreeing to be like an insurance company for them. And so if there's a claim against them, you are their insurance company and have to pay, have to defend them and pay the claim. And that's something that we are being regularly cautioned by your insurance company not to agree to because you don't necessarily have coverage for that. So you might be exposing yourself to claims where the statutory immunities and limitations on damages that you're ordinarily entitled to are not available to you, you don't have insurance coverage, and you're just agreeing to be someone's insurance company. So we're trying to be very, and, and what I've noticed, and I think it was kind of maybe the case here, is people throw these indemnification provisions in contracts all the time without necessarily thinking that hard about whether they really need it or not and what they're subjecting someone to. And so when we asked them to think a little bit more about what kinds of claims are you really concerned about and do you really need this, they did respond that if we were concerned about it, we could delete it. And so that's it.
And that's something that Attorney Dragony has been working pretty closely with Director Gillingham on a variety. This is just the latest example. We've been working on this with fireworks and with RDA and with the fair and other groups that in the past, you know, we felt that everything was okay and we're finding out otherwise. So this is just another example where we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're protected. So any questions about this? Also Cory Neely has been working, he helped facilitate today to make sure that we got a response, so I appreciate his effort in doing that. That was very helpful. And once we get this approved, then we'll, we'll take the next steps and try to implement an action plan. And maybe what we can do is get Cory in here to describe what that's going to look like.
Do we have a motion?
We do not have a motion yet.
I move to approve with the attorney's edits.
Sure, a second?
Second.
A second? All right. Any questions, comments? Here are none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Thank you. And then we do have item 14. We would like to go into closed session as outlined in here. Would somebody like to read the, the motion to go into closed session? Item 14.
I'll read it.
Go ahead.
Discussion regarding potential land sale and TIF request in TID 6 Business Park North. The council may convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1E for the purposes deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alda Person Healy. Any discussion? Here are none? All in favor? I think we need, we need a roll call for this, don't we? For closed session?
Yes.
We do. We do need a roll call.
Caravella?
Aye.
Doom?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to go into closed session. Do you guys want to take a quick five before we do? Okay.